Happy birthday, she gets to.
Okay, it is 1:30 and we are going to call to order the special meeting. I don't have my stuff here, just a second. Of the Salina City Commission on April 3rd. I will look to the staff to see if the Kansas Open Meeting Act required notice has been properly provided.
Yes.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call?
Mayor Hoppick.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Lenkowitz. Commissioner Longbine.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Okay, well those who are able, please stand for a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, I know staff has been working hard this weekend and has some updated information for us, so I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Scrag.
We do. I have a housekeeping item for you, but for those that are in the audience, we prepared quite a bit of information over the weekend at your seat. The copies were too big to fit in the little hanger on the wall like normal, so they are in the back table over here if anyone wants to pick up a copy. So I do have a housekeeping item to start things out. The city attorney pointed out to me as we were walking down to the meeting that our agenda describes this item as a sign of housing proposal discussion, but there is the possibility of action or direction. And so I think we need to amend the agenda to account for that. Do you have a suggested wording, Mr. Bankson?
Simply that. I would think the customary possible action to follow would be the way to amend the agenda to be sure that it's clear that that might very well be the case.
Mayor, if you're ready for a motion, I move that we amend today's agenda to include with possible action to be taken after the words Salina Housing Proposals Discussion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to amend item 3.1 to read Salina Housing Proposal Discussion, possible action to follow. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
All right, thank you.
We got that out of the way.
That's the easy part of today, I have a feeling.
Exactly. I have some preliminary comments for you that will kind of set the stage for where the conversation might go and then we'll, we're here to assist you as you deliberate. So, as I mentioned, there's a number of handouts. Those are in response to the proposals that were received and the feedback that we received from you on Wednesday. And I guess I would note that, understand the sense of urgency to schedule it on today's meeting. As luck would have it, we had pretty much the bulk of staff that would work on this leaving for conferences on Thursday. And so we were scrambling a little bit to pull everything together. But the handouts that you have and the order that they're in front of you are unit comparison, just trying to pull together side-by-side data about all of them so that you can make an assessment if you like as it relates to the number of units, the square footage, the rent rates, the cost per square foot, that type of data. Then broke out just the rent information on another comparison as well as the square footage comparison on another document. You'd indicated you had questions about timeline and when things start up and we've provided you that information in a couple of forms, but there is a Gantt chart of sorts comparing the different timelines that staff prepared. There were questions about the zoning and availability of utilities to the sites. Staff prepared maps of each site indicating whether they're in the city limits or not, their zoning, and we'll get into all of these as the conversation moves on. The zoning that's in place as well as the utilities that are in each of the vicinities of the sites. And there's quite a bit of conversation about amenities as part of the, just the back-and-forth conversation on Wednesday. So staff prepared an amenities table just to kind of inventory everything that we picked up on as being in the conversation and provide you a side-by-side comparison of that. There was conversation about the housing study and how these proposals relate to the housing study. Lauren Driscoll, at the time, distributed excerpts of figures 13 and 14, I believe it is, from the housing study. And that's in that information with a little bit of additional numeric information about Southview and aeroplanes and their proposed numbers in the applicable categories. And then Matt Webster from Stiefel was in close communication with me all weekend and working into the wee hours in the morning. I think he emailed me at 3:00 this morning and prepared a very extensive comparison table that we will certainly walk you through that is a compilation of the highlights or the high points for consideration as we look at the different proposals. And then he also provided a memo that's collaborative in nature. He authored it, but is kind of the result of the conversations that we are having as we conducted the analysis over the weekend. And we'll walk you through that, he'll walk you through that as well. So, at this point, I'd like to offer you some overarching observations on my part. And some of this is recap, obviously, but the request for proposals was for market rate apartments. We provided the housing study. There was an extensive amount of attachments, which you may have noticed in that set that we gave you last week. And so, as I mentioned, the housing study was attached. It's a general assessment of our housing needs and we try to update that periodically. It's not an absolute prescription or a roadmap. We offered it as part of the RFP as background information for the developers to take a look at. And it provided, the RFP provided also for scope alternatives for them to, for individual developers to make their assessment and propose different units and that type of mix. Developers assessed our market in varying forms. Some of them commissioned market studies. Some of them had them available to them from previous work they'd done and others did their own investigations of our market. The developers then proposed products, unit mixes, rent rates based on their assessments. And I would describe our RFP as a solicitation of interest in our market. We've had conversations for years now about how do we get new interest in the market, especially as it relates to building rental properties. The incentives were offered in hopes of garnering that interest that we haven't seen in the past. And as Mr. Webster and I've discussed it, there's certainly a role for the city commission as you assess the proposals, the finishes, the design, but I think we all need to fight the temptation to kind of micromanage or redesign proposals at this point in the process. Where our intent really is to identify a preferred developer to enter into negotiations with. So, you know, the things that are easy to get your attention, finishes, layout, rent rates are certainly appropriate, but I guess our message is we really need to identify a developer to enter into negotiations with and then have those conversations rather than try to reconfigure or conform proposals to our preferences as a condition of moving forward. And if we open that conversation more broadly, it just gets unwieldy in terms of us being able to work with multiple developers and play out those scenarios. So at the point that a preferred developer is identified, then we would enter into negotiations in the development agreement. And within reason, there's an opportunity to certainly reduce to writing everything that they presented to you as part of their proposals. That would be, certainly be my first intent is have that be the basis of a term sheet and then work out additional details and specifics. So, the proposal certainly needs to be acceptable and preferred to you as the city commission. And that certainly can take into account finishes and site layout and unit mix and rent rates, those type of things. But I guess I'm repeating myself, but I think at this point in the conversation, we need to kind of work from the assumption that we would move forward as they proposed with some conversation about deviations, but not a lot of rework as part of today's conversation. As I mentioned, Mr. Webster's been of great assistance. His focus in the documents that he's prepared, and he'll touch on this in greater detail, is performing a risk assessment and a financial assessment. And there, as he and I discuss this, there's a heavy emphasis on our part as we go through this information for you of time being of the essence. We've, this has been something that's been in the works for a long time. We are on a deadline with the state. And so that certainly factors into some of that risk assessment. What's the risk of delays? What's the risk of changes that could throw things off? Or how development-ready is the proposal? So we're looking to confirm readiness and avoid risks of delay. You had considerable discussion about phasing as part of your last conversation, understandably so. And again, Mr. Webster touches on it in his memo. And there's a couple of ways of looking at it. A point that he makes is there's construction phasing, meaning you build out the intended development over time and you just continue to progress through those units. And then there's development phasing, which could mean that you proceed with phase 1 and then you regroup as it relates to phase 2. Certainly understand the developers' concern. Certainly understand, as the commission, your interest in making sure that the market is absorbing those products. And I think I'm repeating myself from prior conversations, but from staff, from, maybe I should just say from my perspective, I think strategically that we're in a better position if we are able to start with the premise or the presumption that there's going to be full build-out. And then if there's a need for assessing absorption, market absorption, and possibly a re-opener if there is an absorption, that at least sets the stage for the presumption that there's going to be full build-out. One of the risks that we assess as part of this analysis is that phased approach and whether we will progress to the second phase or whether that contributes to a delay. Following the meeting, I reached out to you and indicated we shouldn't have conversations as a group, but if you had any questions that you wanted to be sure that we were prepared to address for staff, please let me know individually so that we could try to be prepared for that. And it may be a little disjointed, but I think what I'd like to do is just run through the questions that I'm aware of quickly. Topically, it'll jump around a little bit, but I want to be sure that we cover those. And then dive into that matrix that we prepared over the weekend and then give Mr. Webster an opportunity to review his memo with you. So, there's interest on your part in drilling down on the sites and whether they have infrastructure in place. And we, as I indicated, staff has prepared a map of each one of the sites. What I would describe to you is from a city, water sewer, street, storm sewer perspective, they all have baseline infrastructure. You know, the bulk of them are on the Magnolia property and Virginia Drive is in place. Water and sewer are not only there to serve Menards, but are looped through that property. On one of the locations is on Ohio and south of Magnolia. It is part of the development of the Cedarhurst site. There's water and sewer extended on it. 635 had a creative grouping of different locations and all of those. Some of that is at the Magnolia location. On the east side of the creek certainly is served by the utilities that I described. The west side of the creek, as they discussed, is floodplain. Probably doesn't need as much infrastructure. The Cortland Circle location is in Liberty Edition and it's served by existing infrastructure. And the downtown location is on Third and Mulberry with existing water and sewer. So, there aren't any major red flags from staff's perspective as it relates to any sites kind of being out of the way or not sufficiently served. There certainly will need to be road connections, interior streets, sewer water connections, those type of things. So in terms of shovel readiness, if you want to put it that way, we've discussed the need for improvements in Magnolia Road. We're pursuing those with KDOT and other funding sources. That's probably one of the biggest challenges for development of that area in general. We've known that for quite some time. So there was discussion about the extension of Virginia Drive and connecting it to Schilling. Staff took a look at that. One thing to note is apartments in the numbers that we're talking about would be required to be sprinkled. And sprinkling is an exception to the second road connection. So there's now, there's a possible solution there. And not to bog down too much in the fire sprinkling, fire code requirements, but those entrance points, two entrance points are required off of a perimeter road or a primary road. And Virginia would be considered a primary road. So, argument could be made that two entrances off of Virginia satisfies the fire code. And as far as extending Virginia Drive, the aeroplanes was approved in multiple phases, recognizing that there is a plan for a connection to Virginia Drive. So if you're familiar with that location, there's, it would extend Virginia Drive directly south and then could tie into aeroplanes. So there's some coordination that can be done there and it can be done in phases. Other questions that came up, the Mulberry site that was proposed by 635 is limited in its footprint. It doesn't include any property owned by USD 305. And you may recall that we had some conversations with USD 305 about redevelopment of some of the vacant property there. I certainly don't want to speak for them, but I had enough of a conversation to confirm that understandably, the school and the school board would need to go through a process, much like we would go through a process to dispose of surplus property. And so, you know, I don't think there's an opportunity to enter into direct negotiations there. And I don't know the timeline in terms of how that might play out. There were questions as it related to the housing study. And if I could, I think I'll defer that one after we get into some of the unit mix type conversation. There was questions about star bonds with a residential situation. I don't think there's any proposal that star bonds fund the residential side. The star bond conversation was really kind of an add-on above and beyond housing. And so we haven't really analyzed it as it relates to incorporation into the housing product itself. There were some questions about, you know, the ability to mix and match elements of different proposals. Tried to touch on that before. I think we need to go into this recognizing the developer has proposed to us their proposed development. That's the starting point of the conversation. And that should be the basis of your considering moving forward. If there's an opportunity for any deviations, that would be part of the development agreement negotiations. But I wouldn't go into it expecting significant rework of their proposals and it would be kind of a collaborative conversation with the developer at that point. There was a question about the Perry Reed Anthony Properties combined proposals. Is that one or both linked? I don't want to speak for Perry Reed or Anthony Properties, but from staff's perspective, the initial proposals acknowledged each other and the commonality of Perry Reed, we grouped them together. Had a conversation with them about grouping them together to get to the 500 target. And so, you know, we've been looking at it as an opportunity for them to combine and meet the goals of the RFP. Carving one out leaves us falling short of what we were trying to accomplish with the RFP. And then some of you noted that there's varying applications of incentives to the project. And we get into that in the matrix analysis that Mr. Webster's prepared. But the, there's $25 million from the state. We've indicated a million dollars for essentially greenfield development. And then there's a million dollars that was targeted from the county within low-to-modern income census tracts. And so I think there are multiple instances where that county million has been assumed incorrectly in some of the projects. And that, if we ended up identifying one of those developments, that is certainly something we'd have to take up with them as part of the development agreement. The RFP was very clear in terms of the ALMI census tract being a condition and provided sufficient information to research the ALMI census tracts. So that's just something that we'd have to clarify if we end up in a negotiation with the developer that's incorrectly included that. With that, my suggestion would be that we dive into the comparison matrix that is about the second from the last document in your packet. It's a wide spreadsheet, there you go. So, I think you'll see that it corresponds to the categories that we identified as part of the RFP as kind of the points of consideration. So it's divided into the development team, which kind of relates to experience, financial metrics, which relates to the...
I think that's actually page 2 on ours there, okay. Which one are we starting?
Okay, yep, yeah, I'm sorry, I was gonna run through the categories quickly.
Okay, I'm sorry, I just...
And then go to a more detailed discussion. So then it also looks at the design and construction, looks at site and property control, the project schedule, and then provides a summary of scope alternatives. I guess the other thing that I should tell you is, at the end of all of this, the conclusion of the memo that we provided is essentially a SWOT analysis, a tabulation of in those categories. Our assessment of whether each element is neutral, positive, or negative for each of the proposals as a way to help you kind of distill all this information. Having said that, that is on the risk and financial side. It's not necessarily on the aesthetics and materials.
That's the last page of the Stiefel document.
Correct, the last page of the memo. So, I guess at this point, I'll dive into the comparison matrix and try to walk you through that. On the development team, I'm not gonna read all this to you. I would say, and we had, with Perry Reed being two proposals, you essentially have five groups. I would say four out of the five have kind of a standing relationship in developing in the way that they proposed. 635 Holdings acknowledged to you that they were a newly formed group that individually has experience, but they are relatively new coming together as a group. Building, owning, or holding, you can assess that individually, how important that is to you, but the points were made that you look at projects differently if you're holding it versus flipping it. Four of the five confirmed that they would hold it. 635 confirmed that they would hold it for 10 years as it corresponds to the opportunity zone credits that they are making use of. Contractors, they all had identified contractors with the exception of Flaherty and Collins, who acknowledged the need to identify a general contractor. And they would operate as an owner's representative in that regard. Property managers, four out of the five of them either had in-house property management or had a management relationship. 635 Holdings acknowledged that they'd been in discussions with various managers and it was likely that they would go with Crest Management, which is a known property management firm in Kansas City. Equity, they all indicated readiness or availability of equity, either self-funded equity, equity, having partners and relationships in place or self-funding. With respect to lender debt, the varying forms of confirmation of the availability of debt, with the exception of 635, who indicated optimism that they could secure debt, but also acknowledged it being one of the biggest challenges for them in their project. Representative projects, they all walked you through examples that they have done before. 635 and Salina Destination made reference to star bonds, but again, that's kind of separate and distinct from the housing element. And in the case of 635, those, my understanding was those were example projects from some of the partners, but not necessarily example projects completed by the 635 partnership group. On the financial metrics, the, and Matt can speak to this in greater detail, but we tried to break out for you the total project cost for each, the debt and equity ratios, the developer fees, the incentives that they've built into their models, and then total project cost. As you can see there, the, four of the five are in the 80 to 100 million dollar range. Salina Destination Development, their stated project cost is $68.3 million. I can't really speak to the deviation there other than they noticeably have targeted lower rents and smaller square footages. So, you know, if we end up in development agreement negotiations with them, that financial due diligence would occur at that point. Having said that, you know, more broadly, as we deal with bids and look at proposals for equipment or asphalt, whatever that may be, outliers generally get our attention and cause us to try to do more in terms of verifying. One thing of note there, you may recall that the developers indicated different percentage of development fee. And some of that applied to hard costs, some of that applied to total cost. So, Mr. Webster applied their percentages and calculated the dollar amount, the dollar value of those. And Salina Destination Development committed to you that there would not be a developer fee. So developer fees range from 0 to 12.6 million, as you can see in the table there. There's information there about average cost per unit. Once again, there's kind of some, three groupings. You've got Salina Destination in the 136 range, 635 Holdings, and recognizing they have a breadth of products, in the 166 range. And then Perry Reed and Flaherty Collins in the 200 and above range, I would describe it. We did provide you a table of rent rates that might be more helpful if you really want to dive into rents. The ranges are, the pricing is shown there as well as the square foot rents and then the developer fee as a percentage. In terms of design and construction, again, this is a tabulation of what they proposed in the way of units. They all are hitting that 500 mark. Perry Reed and the Royal are at 250 for each of their projects. So 504, the others are right at 500. As I'm sure you recall, there's a little bit of a mixture of one-bedroom and number of bathrooms and garages and different mixtures. So the other table that we provided inventories all those in a table format. But you can see the mix shown there and the average unit size. Again, if you really want to look at the square footages and the unit sizes, I'd encourage you to take a look at the table that we prepared since it lists them individually where an average could have a skewing effect. With respect to the housing study, and maybe this is the time to jump into that, I put across the board that they were responsive to the housing study. And I know you had a conversation about the excerpts that Ms. Driscoll handed out last week. And so Jacob, if you could call up, yeah, there you go. So, yeah, as I'm sure you recall, the housing study identified a stratified area income in the community, identified affordable housing across different price ranges, and then tried to project out numbers. And the housing consultant was very frank about, kind of, I don't want to say arbitrary, but they kind of split down the middle the numbers they came up with between owner-occupied and rental. There wasn't a lot of specificity or a lot of science behind owner-occupied... There wasn't a lot of specificity or a lot of science behind owner occupied versus rental. So what I asked staff to, so staff started to doing a comparison of the different proposals relative to what the housing study said. And one thing that became apparent to me pretty quickly is, the housing study includes a category of cost on the low end that we, we've said from the outset is hard to satisfy. And so when we look at the proposals we're receiving, they're in the, in the next tier up, which starts to skew things. So what we've done here, what I asked staff to do is to provide for you the number of units in the category that they fit for Southview and for Aeroplanes, to, to give you a sense of where they're, where they're building. And so you can see there that on the under 225 range for owner occupied has 418 identified in 2025, 2022 through 2025, and 802 over the life of the housing study. And the 225 to 300 range is 186 over the life of the, of the study compared to 188 proposed in, in Aeroplanes. If you go to the next figure, figure 14, that's the rental units. And, well, I'm sorry, that's, that's the housing and the rental units, but it is in a rental price point. And so the thing that, the, the point that I was making earlier is there is a category that is less than $625 a month in rent. And we've yet to have anyone propose to us products that can hit that. And so there's not an absolute solution of how, how the market, how we solve that market dilemma, other than try to get as close as we can and hope that increased wages and, make it possible for people to, to essentially afford to pay a little bit more rent than, than the housing study identifies. But the other key point there, I think, is you've got a need for, across different categories, a conventional one-family apartment, small lot, family attached, duplexes, low density, then high density. You've got varying needs of 235, 706, 768, 687 units. Now, are these proposals dialing directly into those? No, they're not.
I think we need to change screens.
Oops.
I'm looking at mine, but we're still sitting on the old one.
Sorry, yeah, if you could go to figure 14, Jacob. Oh, yeah, that's a front back page. It may not have gotten scanned in. So, yeah, I think, I think we only have the front side of that page. Yep. So I'll summarize it for you, but the, the rental units have a, an identified 3, 6, 8, 9, 1,200 units approximately across various categories of, of that one-family, attached duplexes, low-density townhomes and row houses and high-density townhomes and multifamily. I don't think the housing study was ever offered up to be, you know, that precise, that exact, or in place of a developer, an experienced developer's assessment of what they can sell and what price point they can sell at. Staff's takeaway is, across the breadth of, of that, there is a sizable need above and beyond what's going on in the, in the owner occupied market. And then additionally, there are those price points that below 625 continues to be a price point that, that's a struggle. And that number may have gone up some just due to inflation, but that, that continues to be a challenge. So with respect to the housing study, you know, what, what we've indicated in that matrix is, they, they've all had the opportunity to look at the housing study, they've all had the opportunity to assess the market, and we're not, as staff, and I, I'm not suggesting that you as the governing body should provide too much specificity in terms of expectations in place of their assessment of the market, their, their judgment of, of what the market can bear. With respect to phasing, there's an itemization there of, of the, their approach to phasing. And we'll discuss that, Mr. Webster will discuss that, I think, in greater detail as he goes over his memo. In terms of construction materials, you know, every, I think every proposer described their materials generally as Class A, and then provided to you an, an itemization of hardwood cabinets, hard surface, luxury vinyl tile. I think there's a commonality against, across material types, as well as soundproofing construction. Within that, it, it could vary, but again, I don't, that's not a level of detail that we'd encourage you to try to manage these projects to. With respect to amenities, there is an amenities, we did prepare an amenities table for you. Not knowing, and if you, if you want to place emphasis on that, we at least wanted to give you some basis of comparison. Hmm? Yes, yes. Yeah, there you go. Thank you. So that's just the result of tabulating everything that was, was mentioned by developers in different forms, and then determining which, which item was identified by which developer.
Where's that located? I'm sorry. I'm not finding that in my...
Not even. I apologize. I'll see if we can't get that. Sean, would you get the tablets, see if you can print those and bring them down? Thank you. I think there is, you know, some ability to negotiate in terms of offerings, but I wouldn't want to promise you a lot of wholesale changes from what the, the developers have proposed. With respect to utilities and infrastructure, we, we talked about that and...
Mike, is there a chance we could hold off on that till we have that in front of us? I mean, if we're discussing this, because I can't see it and I'm not, we're just...
Give us probably 10 minutes and we'll have printed copies and we could double back to that?
If we could. And quick question on the first page you went over, if you could go back to that, that's the, had the development team financial matrix. Down there, you have deferred development fee for 635 Holdings, and then below you have the total development fee of 3, 3 million 577. So it's, it's, the, the million eight is not paid out, but the total is 3.5 million. Is that correct?
Yes, good point. Yep.
And then if you go over to Flaherty and Collins, it shows development fee up above of 2.4 million, and then below it shows 24,564. I just think we left some, that should be probably 2,456,373.
Matt, you're, you're on the line.
Yes, that's, that's just a typo. It, it should, it should be 2,456,373.
That's what I thought, but I just wanted to make sure anybody looking in wasn't confused about that.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, good catch. So the other thing that you, you asked about and, and has been part of the conversation is annexation and zoning. And, well, maybe I'm getting ahead of myself. Site, site and property control has certainly been a, a topic of conversation and certainly contributes to the timeliness of projects. And so, as you know, 635 Holdings had a, a handful of sites, approximately four of them. One of them's under contingent contract, the others are in various forms of discussion, both in terms of kind of visioning the development of those sites, as well as discussions about securing those sites. If Salina Destination Development indicated both of their sites are optioned, I'm sure you recall the conversation about the Ambassador and the preference for the Menards only approach. Perry Reed has indicated they have purchase agreements or contracts in place for both of their properties, and Flaherty and Collins has, has indicated they have a letter of intent on their property. Annexation, the, all of them, well, I take that back. Flaherty and Collins is solely contained within the city limits currently. The others at, at the Menards location or Magnolia location would involve annexation. And 635 Holdings, the, the sites that are on Magnolia would require annexation. Cortland Circle and the downtown Third Street location would not. Current zoning, the, all the locations on Magnolia are currently in the county as ag zoning. And then the city's future land use currently indicates those for commercial. The other 635 holding properties vary from a planned commercial five and a R3, and then the Flaherty and Collins properties are zone plan development district R2 and R2.5. So there are varying needs for annexation and land use approvals, mostly centering around the Magnolia site. Project schedule, in this table is a, is a more simplified project schedule, and, you know, in terms of, time is of the essence, is probably that first unit's available question. So you can see as you go across that line, varying from November 2024, March of 2024, October of 2024, August of 2026, August of '25. That varies widely for the reasons that the developers discussed with you on Wednesday. And then scope alternatives, I think without a doubt, 635 was the, the most creative and most, and at least in my opinion, the most thought-provoking in some of the, the scope alternatives that they provided. They discussed the Starbond project at length, and, and it seemed to be oriented to baseball and soccer and possibly lacrosse. Working with the airport authority, they, they broached the possibility of daycare and extended stays and RV parks. All that is supplemental to or above and beyond kind of housing proposal, but those are certainly thought-provoking and, and certainly could add value. With respect to Salina Destination, and, and I should say, we organized these in the same order they presented to you on Wednesday. That's how I keep going through them in that order. So with respect to Salina Destination Development, they indicated a, a willingness to develop the Ambassador site, if we said that was important, but strategically and otherwise kind of a preference for focusing on, on the Magnolia site. They indicated a flexibleness on apartments and duplexes, as well as a, a willingness to consider rent to own, and talked about solar as a possibility with the garage carports. Perry Reed indicated a willingness to commit to an 80% of average median income to, over a 10-year period, to kind of control or try to ensure affordable rents. They, they discussed the possibility of a public park at the Magnolia location, and they had some extra property available for, for commercial. Flaherty and Collins, I don't know, they, they indicated a willingness to, to work with us on materials and, and design. Beyond that, I think they, they, it was more about their site and, and the vision that they had for their site. So with that, and there's additional notes as well, with that, maybe I'll stop there and, knowing that we do want to get to Mr. Webster and give him an opportunity to walk you through his analysis memo as well. But I'll, still waiting on the amenities table, but I'll open it up for questions.
Start to my left. Well, first of all, I just want to say thank you for pulling this all together for us. We think we made the right decision to have these documents collated for us before the meeting. So I know staff put a lot of effort into that, and thank you very much. I really don't have any questions, I just need a couple minutes to digest this, so...
Understandably so.
Might need another week to digest all this. All this stuff is just running around fluid in my head. I'm, I'm counting on our discussion, you know, like that game where the coins just drop into slots, things will slot. How, how does staff approach the difference between affordable rents and market rent? Because I, I've heard both terms used and...
Well, it's a good question.
And not interchangeably.
Yes. So we were very explicit in the RFP that we, these were not to be income-qualified units. So, and all the developers have indicated that, and Perry Reed confirmed that in, in terms of their approach. So no intention of, you know, HUD funding or some other program that would create an income qualification, nor is there any intention as part of these incentives to dictate an income qualification. Beyond that, we, we're relying on the rent rates that they've proposed to you as, as their target rent rates, and the exception to that being Perry Reed offered up, that they, over a 10-year period, would look at trying to create a rent rate that's affordable to families making 80% of the average median income. I think they indicated, you know, rule of thumb is 30% of that is what's affordable as rent. So that's a long way of saying...
Now, is that a true market rate, or is that an affordable rate?
Well, I, I would tell you that by way of the housing study and our conversations with prior developers, as well as some of these developers, there is a rule of, a commonly accepted rule of thumb that, you know, 30% of, of your income is about what you can stomach to pay rent. And so that's what they're looking at in general. So then it becomes a assessment of who's your market that you're trying to rent to, that average median income, or 80% of that average median income is a little bit more specificity that Perry Reed offered than, than others might. Other than including something like that, our expectation would be they build the product that they proposed to us, and there wouldn't necessarily be ongoing oversight of their rent rates. They'd just have to compete in the market. And you, you certainly heard from quite a few of them that our rent rates are low, and that's part of the problem of being able to develop in our market, and they need to try to find a rent rate that, that the market will sustain and then will pencil for them. But Matt, do you, is there anything you want to add to that?
Yeah, Commissioner, a great, a great point. So I think in many instances, market rates are affordable. I mean, that's, that's the, that's the reality, and, and that's certainly what Perry Reed hit on. But as you move to larger, more expensive apartments, maybe you're above affordable, it just, it just depends on the product. But, but that, that's just a, I think, a unique feature of the, of the marketplace in Salina today.
All right. Thank you. For our discussion today, if, I'm just gonna pull an example out of there. Let's say the type of cabinet doors. That is some, that, that's a detail that we need to ignore today and leave that for negotiations?
Yes, please. That would be my, if there were a, a developer that you, from what you heard from them was unacceptable in terms of, you know, what you heard from them by way of quality, I think that's certainly a consideration. But getting to that, that additional level of detail, we can memorialize that as part of the development agreement, but I wouldn't get to that level of detail today.
All right. And I noticed the housing studies were more income-based, rent-based.
Yes.
Most of the information we have is more square footage and type of unit based. And it's sometimes very difficult to, you know, what, what does a rent of 1,100 get you? Well, it could get you a large one-bedroom, it could get you a small duplex, it could get you a two-bedroom, two-bath, it might get you a garage, might not. And it's a little hard to go from one chart to the other.
I understand, well, as much as I'd love to be able to give you an absolute answer on that, that's not what we do, so...
And the market would change it in six months.
Right, okay, thanks. Thank you. Okay, it was more a comment than a question. I mean, I don't expect you to come up with a chart that...
Yeah, we are, you know, we tried to provide all the information that we had available to developers on the front end so that they could then assess what, what they felt was the appropriate product to bring to the market. They obviously do vary, and there's, there's a relative relationship of cost and square footage, so lower cost generally translates to smaller units. And that, that's why I was making the point earlier in the housing study of, there, there is a breadth of need there. There is a category that none of these meet, which is 625 and below, and there's a sizable number identified in that category that I don't, I don't know but for something like this, that it'll ever truly be met. It'd be a question of whether we're putting something on the market that's close to what they can attain.
Our housing study, based on the rents and the types of units, took into account the probable percentage of new workers who'd be bringing families, those who'd be coming by themselves. or just two people.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to speak for the, the consultant, but they, it did try to stratify the community based on income type, and I think it probably projected what was observed, uh, accounting for the growth. But it, it was trying to stratify our demographic by income and back into what those incomes could afford.
Thank you. I'm done. Am I right?
Well, this is a lot of information. I would appreciate it if I would have got it about nine o'clock this morning.
We were still working on it at nine o'clock this morning. Um, not, not for lack of working on it over the weekend.
Well, I do thank everyone for the work and effort they put in with the, the Swoke charts and the Gant charts and, uh, analysis. It's a lot of information.
Yeah, understandably so. And I think, you know, two things, uh, trying to boil it all down, um, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Webster here in a minute. He can walk you through, uh, kind of that financial risk analysis and that SWOT analysis. I think there's that, and then there's the more intangible aspects of whether you have a strong preference of, you know, one development, one proposal over another, and you kind of have to balance those two. Um, we, we want to be sure that we're not getting too far out on a limb on, on risks that extend the timeline and, and push us out too far. But we're hoping that at the end of this conversation, those two decision points will help you distill this down.
Well, in, in discussing the rents and amenities, uh, I guess I am a little disappointed. I thought the rents would be lower, given the incentives that are on the table. But I suppose if we didn't have them, those incentives, that we wouldn't have had any proposals.
Yeah, I was going to say, if we didn't have those incentives, they'd probably be building in Wichita and Kansas City. Um, that's been part of the struggle. And, you know, as you know, we got thirteen proposals. Um, there weren't any, uh, of any substance that had significantly lower rent rates. They, you know, what you're seeing out of these four is pretty representative of what we saw out of all thirteen. But for some that, uh, weren't very well detailed.
In that regard, uh, I think that the market will determine the rent eventually. And as far as the amenities, they're all nice and, you know, but what we're looking for is doors and roofs. Uh, not so much playgrounds and swimming pools. I was, uh, the one that I think voiced the most concern about connecting Virginia Drive. And my concern is not so much with, uh, fire and safety, but traffic flow and congestion. It is my feeling that, uh, five hundred units congested in one area with one way in is too much traffic. I really think we need, I would really like to see if we're going to go with that Magnolia properties, connecting Virginia Drive to Schilling Road. Was that studied?
I'm sorry, what?
Was that feasibility looked at?
It, it's certainly part of our planning in terms of city recognition and the need for that connectivity. And as development happens, we will, you know, as part of plating and, and design of plating, make sure that happens. But it was not put on any of these developers to extend and beyond their site to make that connection as part of this. The, there, whether it's there or anywhere else, we, five hundred brings with it a, a load factor um, that isn't necessarily overwhelming, but we know whether it's this project or other projects at Magnolia, we, there's a, an identified need for improvement in Magnolia Road and, and, you know, we, you've seen the plans for a traffic circle to try to, we're trying to build all that into our planning as well. But kind of have to take it in phases.
I think we need to kind of stay on what we're talking about because we're going to start going off on why I don't like this one or that one. I think we need to wait till we kind of get to discussing each project a little bit more. Cause we're going to kind of go down again, a, a direction that we're not talking about right now. So I, I understand your concern, but I think we need to wait till we maybe start getting into the projects with a little more detail.
Okay.
Personally, I, I think we ought to be, let's try to ask questions about the, the documents that are in front of us right now. And I think we'll get into that here in a little bit, so.
The infrastructure. Did, uh, utilities look at, at whether the, what's in place could handle five hundred units?
Well, I can't say that we specifically looked at that, uh, but both of those have been designed. The primary locations, whether that's Magnolia, Ohio, Schilling, have all been designed to take into account full build-out. So I'm comfortable in saying that it, the capacity is there. Downtown, as we know, it may have some challenges, but that kind of goes with redevelopment. I wouldn't, I wouldn't shy away from that purely for that reason.
On the timelines, I like your Gant chart here. The, uh, the one is going to go with all projects at once. And another one is going to stagger them based on renting them out. Is that kind of in the scope of the? I guess which, which plan, according to the housing study, most fits with the build-out?
In terms of timeline?
Yeah.
Well, the, the housing study has a, and the reason I laugh is Lauren has said this time and time again. Um, there, there is a category of twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-five is the first round and it's twenty twenty-three. So we're right in the middle of that first column in the housing study. The other thing I would tell you is, um, I personally, in feeling the pressure from employers in terms of their sense of urgency. So, um, that's why I say, you, you've got, you know, I started my comments with time being of the essence, both from the state funding timeline perspective, as well as what we're trying to respond to in the way of, of need. So I don't know if that answers your question, but.
Yeah, and that state funding, that's a, a big, uh, factor.
And, and none of these projects, as their timeline is proposed, get outside that window. But, uh, you, you have two things going on, a sense of urgency to get products on the market and then cutting it close on the backend.
And am I reading that correctly? The only, uh, property that the county funds would apply to is the, the Moberly property.
Yeah, and I, I haven't spoken with the county, but, you know, I think all the conversations we had with them presumed a, a, a large build-out, a sizable project. That, that downtown site, uh, as it's proposed is thirty units. So I would expect if there were any county funds available, that it would be proportional or, uh, it, it wouldn't be unreasonable of them to say, that's not what we intended when we offered up a million dollars.
Thank you. Commissioner Long, I'm, Commissioner, I'm looking right at him like.
No worries.
Got two L's in my ride.
Just wanted to reiterate what my fellow commissioners have said in terms of, we appreciate staff's efforts to, I mean, there's obviously a plethora of information here. And you've put it in a format that's far easier to assimilate than previously, so thank you for that. And I don't have questions, but I'm sure I will as this conversation progresses.
One other thing, the timeline, the conversation reminded me of something that I intended to touch on as part of the, reviewing the matrix. Um, you know, the, the quickest timeline by far is Salina Destination Development. And that is, is very dependent on, uh, them using plans that they currently have and replicating them in Salina. If, if they're, it is part of the ongoing conversation, we, we indicate that we want that to change. That impacts their timeline. They, their ability to move as quickly, um, as their timeline indicates, I think, is heavily predicated on and based on their comments to you on Wednesday, is based on, they have decided plans, they're ready to apply for a building permit. Uh, that's how they described it. We got to get through land use and some zoning and, and some site planning. But they, uh, have a plan, they'll just replicate.
I think some of the things we're going to be discussing will be handled within the development agreement once we get to that point. Um, question, I guess, question or comment, I'm not sure which is. Basically, a lot of these things, say Ambassador or Magnolia, and I know they, um, Salina Destination gave us options, whether we, you know, two fifty here or five hundred. I think when we're talking, we might as well throw the Ambassador out. I mean, we, in our minds and for the public, we're not going to be dealing with the Ambassador. Would, am I correct?
Well, it's ultimately your decision, but, uh, we, we.
The only, the only.
I would concur with that.
Okay. Cause I think the, the developer pretty much told us that it was too expensive and for us to go against that wish, would throw rents and who knows what else.
And our, our analysis, as, as we prepared it, our conversation was on that basis as well, but.
I, I would, uh, you know, that discussion was indicated that they did have alternate sites identified that, you know, it's a little late to put it on the table now, but I would be open to hearing about them.
Yeah, I'd, I'd suggest that if we end up there, that's a development agreement conversation as well. I think, I think, uh, pick whatever developer i- it is, your decision to enter into conversations with them should be pretty much at face value of what they've presented. And then if anything deviates, it'd be part of that development agreement conversation.
Um, and I guess when I'm looking at the Salina Destination Development, uh, it says both sites are options. So again, we're just talking about Magnolia. When we say options, we also have one that has it under contract and one has purchase agreement in place. There's a difference. Do they, is there a contract or is it just optioned?
We just kind of quoted it as we heard it. Uh, some of them, uh, provided the, an actual copy of, uh, the purchase, the contingent purchase contract. And, um, uh, Flaherty and Collins provided a copy of the letter of intent. But, um, we're basically just parroting what.
What they said.
Believe we've been told.
Okay. Guess what? Okay.
And the amenities table was handed out in the midst of the conversation. I don't know that I have a whole lot to add, other than that was our effort to kind of give you a side-by-side comparison of that.
Not a big deal, but I think the secured package delivery center, the Royal also stated they had that also. I think that was matching. Um, and I guess we can discuss garages versus carports when we get into each individual. I didn't see that on here. We'll get into each individual, uh, property, so, okay.
It's okay. I'd like to.
Yep.
Like to ask Mr. Webster to walk you through his memo.
Um, okay, before I do that, I did want to clarify one thing. Uh, the Flaherty and Collins, um, financial metrics section of the, of the matrix, um, includes an incentive amount of thirty-eight million dollars, which is obviously more than, than the maximum of twenty-seven. They indicated that twelve million of the, of the incentive was attributable to what they called IRB slash TIF. Uh, since, since we're not offering TIF, it's not coming from TIF. And if it's coming from IRB, generally that, that's not a capital contribution for construction. It's a savings over the, over the abatement period. So we would have to get to the bottom of that, but I, I'm assuming that once you study this, you would notice it. So I wanted, I wanted to address it directly. And the process that we used for the review of all this didn't allow us to go back to people and ask more questions. So we just put what they, we, we just put what they sent us on, on that. Um, with that, uh, the memo. So, so obviously, um, the, the focus I have is on, is on risk and financial matters. So I did want to go through the memo because it's not that long and, and I do feel real strongly about, about, you know, diligencing some of these issues and, and focusing on them. Um, so I guess the first thing is, is, is sort of obvious. If you, if there is a clear consensus, then, then maybe some of these other considerations, um, aren't, aren't important. But I, I don't get the sense that there's a clear, a clear consensus. I get the sense that you're really doing careful analysis, which I, I think is the right way to go. Um, other important considerations, so we've talked about this. These are things I did not cover in my memo and that I don't focus on because I'm not an expert in construction materials or building styles or class A amenities or unit sizes or locations. Those, those are things that you and the, and the city staff need, need to make judgments on. And those judgments aren't, in my view, you know, right or wrong, they're preferences that are, that are, um, informed by, you know, living in the community and hearing what people want and seeing what, what you think needs. So I'll just stay away from that, uh, but I, but I did want to, I did want to, you know, mention that those are important. And, and, um, and so, y- y- you know, they just need to be figured into the, to the mix and how much you weight them is, is your judgment at the end of the day. Number three on the, on the first page, the, the so-called SWOT analysis, which is an analysis of strength, weakness, opportunities and threats. Um, I thought that was a useful lens to, to examine the points that I think are important. So at the end of this memo, I'll go through my little SWOT table, um, and, and tell you how I, I viewed it. There, I mean, there is, there is some room for, for disagreement about how you might apply those, but I'll tell you why I applied certain things. Um, okay, particular risks. I think these are really important because I've done a lot of these projects over the years, all, all kinds, uh, housing, commercial, retail, et cetera. And, and identifying the risks on the front end is really important. And either mitigating the risks or being clear that you're accepting the risks, I think are the two ways to approach it. So, so the biggest, one of the biggest risks is a failed property closing. Um, because that, you know, that doesn't give you a site to build your project and you, and you're done. Um, I think, I think most of the development teams have done a good job with that. The, the only one that had multiple sites that weren't under contract was, was six thirty-five holdings. And they described their, um, their position with various landowners as, quote, partnership opportunities, or we've had numerous discussions. So I'll, I'll leave it to you, uh, as, as to how likely you think those, those would be to, to be, uh, going to contract. But, but certainly, uh, it makes things more complex if you get into, into one of these projects without having, uh, land control. Uh, the second particular risk, um, that, you know, is right up there with property is a, a failed equity raise. Uh, I think all of the groups, uh, indicated that they had equity or, or identified equity. So, um, the amount of equity in this project is somewhat less than you would typically see because you have the incentives which add capital to the capital stack and therefore reduce the need for equity. Uh, so I'm not particularly concerned about the equity raise. Um, C, or C, failed debt raise. This is, this is probably a more realistic risk. And this is a risk that can manifest itself in a lot of different ways. I mean, so financial market meltdown, financial market dislocation, we've seen, we saw meltdown in oh eight. We've seen dislocation over the last month or two. Um, the, these are real risks. And some of the development teams, in my view, have done a better job of mitigating that risk than, than others. Um, you, you simply can't proceed without the debt. Um, and the way, the way we will draft the development agreement is to make a failed debt raise a default. Um, and, and then the city would have the right to kick out a developer if they said they were going to raise debt and they couldn't do it. But if that happens, um, you're going to be, you're going to be down the road and you're going to have to start over with a second, uh, development team. Um, and, and that time, that passage of time is a risk. Um, so I think that identifying the debt and, and saying how strongly you, you know, that you feel about having the debt financing is, is important. And, uh, Salina Destination Development did the best job with that, bringing UMB Bank to the, to the commission meeting. The others tried to, tried to, uh, uh, address the issue by letters of interest or telling you how successful they'd been, um, which is, which is good, but doesn't, you know, doesn't eliminate, uh, the, the risk. I mean, what, what, well, you ultimately fear is a, you know, is a repeat of something like twenty oh eight where, you know, uh, funding just isn't available and you have to wait it out. Um, and again, I think the, the best way to mitigate that is to move quickly. Um, construction process. Um, so what I heard in the presentations was the, the teams that had construction partners seemed to know an awful lot more about how to do this. They all basically said labor's not a problem. We know exactly how to address that. And they seem to have a much better handle on the, um, on the price of materials and how this was all coming together. So I think that's real, I think that's real important and I, and I think that the teams did a pretty good. did a pretty good job of addressing it, because if you haven't been through that process, it's, it's more of a process of discovery, and, and again, you're, you're educating yourself, but you're doing it down the road, which I don't know is, is in the city's interest. Public-private experience. This is important, because getting the development agreement done, and aligning public and private needs and wants is not something that everybody knows how to do. Some of these groups are more experienced than others. I was, I was encouraged to hear that they, they all have some public-private experience, and some have substantial public-private experience. So I don't, I don't note any, any particular singular problem with, with that element. The phasing. So, so this gets back to the timing, you know, which again, I think is a substantial risk to the city. And I wanna, I wanna address the phasing in two ways. One is the, the construction phasing. So, all of them, you're building 500 units, or you're building 250 units, whatever the case may be, you're gonna have to phase it, because that, the two, the, the units are divided up into a number of buildings. And you don't build all the buildings at once, you, you know, you, you build the buildings over a period of time to take advantage of labor and, and the best efficiency. So, as a natural process in this development, you're going to phase the construction. You know, if you were building, you know, 75 units or something, this might not be an issue at all, but, but it is an issue with all these projects. So, I just wanted to point out that the construction phasing is common to, to everybody, and, and some of the, some of the projects had detailed discussions of how they were gonna do the phasing. I recall that Flaherty and Collins had a, had a kind of a detailed construction phasing, but, but not everybody really got in, into the weeds on that, and we would, we would examine that. And it, and it basically comes down to how many units per month, or per quarter, or something, something like that, some metric, you're gonna be delivering, when, once you start building these and finishing them, because you don't wanna, you typically wanna have, you know, some, some reservoir of, of units to rent, but you don't wanna overwhelm the market either. So, they'll all think about that, and I think, I think many of them had already addressed it. The, the second kind of phasing, and this is probably more important, is, is what I'll call development phasing. So, the only, the only developer, and I'll, I'll just refer to Perry Reed and Perry Reed Anthony as one developer, cause they're, they're essentially working, you know, in concert. They wanted a development phasing that had what I'll call a contractual breakpoint, which was, they wanted to do some units roughly, roughly, I think, two-thirds or so, and then they wanted to be sure that they had 90% occupancy before they moved on to the final, to the final part. And they described it as, you know, dealing with absorption risk, but I would point out that they were the only developer who, who, who took that view, and that all the other development teams were committed to 500 units as a, you know, we're, we're gonna close on financing, we're gonna do 500 units. So, so Perry Reed and Anthony, and I think they even, you know, admitted that this was a risk. So I don't, I, I view it as a risk to the city, I don't view it as a risk to the developer. You know, for, for the developer, it's a, it's mitigating risk. For you, it's building in the risk that you won't get 500 units, and that you will run out of time, and not be able to reuse the incentives, or the unused incentives from the state, and therefore you'll get less than 500 units, and you'll have to get back money. And, and I consider that an, what I call asymmetric risk. I mean, if, if both sides have equal risk, then I think that's a fair, I think that's a fair bargain. But you're gonna have to decide whether that asymmetric risk is acceptable to you, because there are certainly other development teams who are not pushing that risk to, to the city, and, and are not penalizing the city for a, a problem the city may not, you know, may not have anything to do with. So I just wanted to point that out. So aside from risks, I wanted, I wanted to point out some other, what I'll call business points. These are sort, these are sort of, some of them are common sense, some of them are just issues that I've identified over the years. I think I've already, I've already mentioned this, but I'll say it again. Time, time is an enemy, and, and time is an enemy because costs will escalate, the economic climate may improve, but, you know, it's just as likely, or might be more likely to deteriorate. Financing, so certainly inflation has been a problem in the financial markets. More expensive financing makes the, the projects harder to do. A couple of the development teams talked about that directly, you know, their sensitivity testing of, of interest rates. And I don't think there's anybody who believes, believes that construction prices are, are as a whole likely to decline. They, they may, inflation may slow down, it may stop, but I don't, I don't, I haven't heard anybody saying that stuff's gonna get cheaper over the next year or two. So, all of these, all of these things tied together, you know, lead me to the conclusion that getting the development done and underway as soon as possible, as soon as reasonably possible, is in the city's interest, and, and certain of the development teams have been much more mindful of this. Others have very long processes before, you know, you get to construction, and I, and I think that is a risk, and you'll have to decide whether that risk is something you want to, to shoulder. Shorter development schedules, you know, in other words, compressing the delivery of units is, is desirable, because you're getting things done first, but perhaps more importantly, if something goes wrong, it gives you time to go to Plan B. I mean, we're gonna have defaults built into the development agreement, and if people don't do what they say they're gonna do, even if it's not their fault, the city will have the, the ability to default them, and, and then the city will have to figure out what to do, and of course, that'll be based on facts and circumstances at the time, but time is your, you know, you need the, you need the time to figure it out, you need the time to perhaps talk to others, and you need the time for them to do their construction, and still hopefully get the incentives. So I think, I think again, it's something to be mindful of. Onto page three of the memo. Types of, types of units. So we've, we've talked a little bit about this, and I, and I think a couple of the developers have addressed it, but if you, if you try to do 500 one-and-two bedroom apartment units, you know, the, the, the chance of overwhelming the market, and not, and the market not being able to absorb those units is much greater than if you do some one-and-two, and then maybe you do some duplexes or townhomes or something. I just wanna, I want, I wanna keep, I want for everybody to keep in mind that the way the absorption works depends on the diversity of, of the units, and, you know, how all that works, I don't think there's a science to it, but I, I think it's just, it's good to be mindful, because the absorption of, of duplexes, I think, would not be related to the absorption of one-and-two bedroom apartments, and I think a couple of the development teams made that, made that point. Unit costs and rent levels. So, another thing to keep in mind is you compare that financial metrics, and I think it's generally true, if you look at the numbers. So, lower construction budgets equate to lower rent levels, and because of the passage of time, all this is gonna take time, it's gonna take time to negotiate the agreement, it's gonna take time to do due diligence, and then close the transaction, all the costs that we're looking at are likely to, to rise, and so therefore, the construction costs will go up by some percentage, and the rents will go up, and, and so, if you, if you, if you don't like high rents, those rents are likely to go higher, and even the low rents are likely to rise somewhat, and again, that's just a function of where, where we find inflation in the markets, and in the economy. And then this gets back to the whole, hey, let's try to move as quickly as we reasonably can. Point number six on page three. We will, you know, we will endeavor in the development agreement to put all the risk mitigation that we can in, and encapsulate the, the, the important business points, and work with you to, to explain all this, and then put, put in whatever additional points you, you think might be, be in, necessary. This is all to come, but, but I just wanted to let you know that we are thinking, sort of thinking ahead. And then again, sort of obvious, number seven. What we're doing today, or in the next few days, is not the same as the final decision, because we've got due diligence to do with whatever, whatever development team, and then we still need to go, go to a term sheet, and then hopefully to final negotiation, and that'll, that's, that's a process, but, but we have to have somebody to talk to to move forward. And then, just to clarify, I'm not aware that any of the development teams have withdrawn from consideration, so there are a number of teams, obviously, above the, the five that we interviewed, who had, you know, proposals that, that might be of interest, and until we picked one, sort of everybody's still in the running. Clearly, I think we've, we've identified some, some front runners. Onto the SWOT analysis. So I'll just give you my thinking on this, and, and then, again, reasonable minds can disagree, if you see it differently, you know, you can adjust this. So, so N is neutral, and so I just sort of ignored that from, from the little table, and then you have plus for strength, or minus for weakness and threats, and, and on a project like this, where you're doing some sort of define, I'm not sure there's a lot of difference between a weakness and a threat. I mean, the weaknesses are threats, really. But, but, you know, if, if you wanted to include things like, like units or amenities, you could turn this table, you know, that's, that's not a threat, that, that truly is a, is a weakness. So you can certainly expand this concept to take into account things that you individually, as, as elected officials might consider. I, I tried to confine it to, to what's in this memo. So, equity, it, it seemed to me that, aside from Perry Reed, Magnolia Commons, everybody has sort of identified the equity, that they were a little less certain on theirs. Debt, 635, I think the quote was, it'll be a challenge, and then Siena Destination Development brought their, their banker. Everybody else expressed, you know, real confidence, but, but, you know, not much more than that. Build, own, and hold, I gave 635 a neutral, because they talked about 10 years, but not a particular commitment beyond that. Everybody else really emphasized their long-term ownership. Contractor, as, as I've already mentioned, you know, many, many of these guys brought their builders, who I, I found to be, you know, highly informed. I was impressed. Flaherty and Collins has a construction, an in-house construction group, but they, they were gonna find a contractor, but, you know, they, they did say they hadn't done it yet. So that, so I think that was an outlier. Development fee, you know, you expect people to charge development fees, so I didn't wanna, I didn't wanna make a, a judgment about whether, you know, three or four or five, I mean, anywhere between three and five percent is typically what you see. But Destination Development got a plus there, because they're not charging a development fee. I think the public-private partnership experience for all these groups is more than adequate. Some had a lot, some, some had less, but, but they all had worked with, with municipalities, and I think that's real important, so I don't, I don't expect a problem there. Construction phasing, I thought all of the, I thought all of the phasing was, was acceptable, but I graded the Royal down a little bit, because they basically delay the construction of the Royal, you know, because the Magnolia Commons is sort of in front of it. So, so that, that is an outlier. And then, the, the timing risk, we've already talked about that, that's, that's when, sort of when you start, sooner you start, the sooner you finish, and Siena Destination Development seemed to be the most able and willing to move very quickly. The others had, had more time involved. Site control, closing risk, again, I think everybody had the same approach, except for 635, which mentioned, you know, sort of open negotiations and, and, and discussions, which I think would impart, you know, all kinds of sort of unknowns. I, I don't know the owners of all these properties, but you probably do. Construction start, the, you know, getting sooner, sooner is better, and, and I just, I just made a judgment on, on the calendar there. And then you go down to the bottom, and you, you total up the pluses and the minuses. So this, this is not a, you know, this is not a pass/fail, this is not, you know, a, a letter grade, this is just sort of trying to build a lens around how you, how you might compare risk, and then again, you could take the SWOT table, and you could include, you know, the things that are important to you, so if, materials, or design, or amenities. I, I just chose to stay away from those, because I, I thought it was a little bit outside of my area of expertise. With, with that, I'll throw it open, well, I'll hand it over to Mike to, to mention anything I might have forgotten, and then answer any questions you might have.
I don't know about anything forgotten. The, one of the points that you made was unit mix and, and rent rates, and so, that did cause me to kind of set aside the, the two comparison tables that I mentioned but didn't go over. If, if the commission wants to dive into either one of those, there is a, a table that just carves out the various rent rates, and then there's another table that carves out the square footages. There, there's one that rolls it all together, but it's probably a little harder to, to sort out all the information. So, as you can see there, and the rent, both of them are an inventory of all the various unit types that came up in the, the conversation from just combining all the different developers and, and the units they proposed. So, I didn't count how many there, there are there, but about a dozen. And then rent rates in the particular cells that, that apply. So, you've, you've got, I think, 800 on the, on the low end, up to 1600 for a three-bedroom, 2,400 for a, a townhome. Those are probably kind of outliers in terms of products. But then, as, as Matt mentioned, you know, cost drives rent, and, and square footage drives cost, and so the other piece that you have there is the unit square footages, and you'll notice that table, it's formatted the same way in terms of the, the types of units. 635 Holdings is broken out across their three different sites, and then the Siena Destination has both the Ambassador and Menards scenario, and, and the Menards-only scenario, but I think they're, the, the difference being the Menards scenario includes duplex ranches. I think, as I mentioned earlier, we provided you average square footages in the matrix, but that can be a little, you know, misleading, where this is unit by unit, size by size. And so, Siena Destination, their apartments, their one-bedrooms are 528, and their two-bedrooms are 829, which is on the low end in terms of cost, also on the low end in terms of square footage. I bring that up only because that is a judgment call that I think you, as a governing body, need to make, and while those price points don't get to the, the low, lower price points identified in the housing study, that's kind of the, the low end, and then you see a lot of gravitating around higher rent rates and, and larger square footages in the other proposals. So, with that, I realize that is a lot of information, and I'll stop.
Just, excuse me. As far as the square footage, does anyone here have any idea of what the average square footage is for some of the more well-known apartment complexes, or, or just something to use as a-
I'm gonna look to my right.
Okay.
A little down the-
I can give you a ballpark figure. Obviously, it's varying from product, I'll use my product as an example. My one-bedrooms will range anywhere from 500 to 725 square feet. My standard two-bedroom, one-bath is approximately 800 square feet, maybe a little bit more, it's, you know, depending on the, the building and the floor plan, but that's a pretty good rough number. That might fluctuate very little.
I had a question that wasn't, wasn't discussed last week, is, I don't know what the standard is, but utilities. Water and trash, is that typically included in the rent rates?
That is not something that we gathered as part of the RFP process. It's not a long way to saying I don't know.
I'll defer to my, oh, commissioner on the right.
I'll shoot you an educated guess. The newer properties, you don't wanna pay for water, so my educated guess is that they'll be individually metered, so the, the tenants will be paying for electric and water, and usually the trash service is something that's kind of lumped in. But as far as the other utilities, I mean, I guess we didn't ask during the presentations, are these gonna be gas and electric, or are they gonna be total electric? Do we know?
Given utilities in the area, I'd assume electric, but I don't know.
But, that's my best guess, and if there's gas, they're gonna pay for gas as well, the tenants will.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I, I just thought it was always kind of standard, uh, the water and trash was part of the rent, but.
Older properties, yes, because water was cheaper. So if you have like a seven, nineteen seventies, eighties product, um, that's where you tend to see, it's just one water meter and then they factor into the cost. And then water went up substantially over the course of the years. And it's, uh, cost prohibitive to convert over and individually meter every apartment.
We'd be putting in five hundred new water meters.
Oh.
Five hundred new water accounts.
It's, yeah, it's new clients in the water district, so.
Okay, I'll look at city staff. How do you want us to proceed? Is there any more information to hand out or is that?
I don't believe so. As a little bit of a recap, I think we've, we've categorized in kind of two, um, topics of conversation. One is the, the preferential considerations that, for you as the governing body. The other is the, uh, more risk and financial analysis, the matrix. Um, I think, you know, Matt walked you through the, the SWOT analysis. Our, our assessment is six thirty-five is a little bit, uh, a lot of great ideas, but not quite, uh, as far along in terms of thought process as securing to the point that, uh, they probably don't, they're not on our schedule and, and, uh, enough of a risk that they fell out of our consideration. Um, Flaherty and Collins, for similar reasons that Matt described, and we found ourselves kind of weighing between, um, Salina Destination and Perry Reed. And one thing that, that Matt did bring up in conversation, I hope I'm not putting words in your mouth, was, was an observation that the Perry Reed project probably involves a negotiation of two development agreements. Not to say that it can't be done, but.
Yeah, I, as I was working through this, again, this weekend, it, it was somewhat different in the fact that we're going over RFPs that are not comparing apples to apples. Uh, we have a different mixture of properties, different locations, um, square footage, all those type of things to take into consideration. So it's, uh, it makes the analysis quite different. In fact, I found each one of them to have some, their pluses and minuses. And, and it's not like I can, I'd like to take this from this one and this from this one and combine them, but it doesn't work that way. So with that, we're gonna have to somehow get down to one. And I, and I don't know how we wanna address that as a, as a commission. Whether we wanna look at each one separately, I don't know if there's one or two that people are not comfortable with as a group. I guess would be.
I, I would like to get a feel, is the commission ready to drill this down and make a decision today?
I for one am. I, I don't, you know, I could use three minutes to walk around the block and let all these numbers settle, but I'm not gonna be any more ready next week than I am now. So, yeah, that's, and if we get to the point where we can't decide, we can always continue with God forbid, but, um, I think it's, it's time that we.
Yeah.
At least, you know, mesh out.
What keeps you in time is the big deal here.
I think staff would appreciate us making a decision today and so we can get things moved forward.
Yeah, and I, I don't wanna pressure you beyond what you're comfortable. Um, I, I didn't mention earlier, we are getting outside.
Yeah.
Input. And I think the longer you take that, uh, more time you take to make a decision, the more that ramps up.
I, I would like us to be able to, and then, I mean, we do have a four o'clock commission meeting that we have to call to order. And if we're not done with this, then we'll come back after that. Um, I would like to see if we could at least get it down to two. So we have, or, you know, if you've got it to three, it's helping, but you know, if you get it at least down to two, then we start comparing, uh, the pros and cons. I think we need to realize that some of the things that I'm not, I'm not gonna like, you might like, and some of that will come down to the development agreement. Um, and,
We won't know that until we start talking.
Until we start, but we have to pick somebody that we can negotiate with.
Right.
And, and if I could, I'd add to that as well. There's certainly things that we will enter into the conversation with the development agreement. But I think we need to start with a starting point of are we comfortable that the developer knows their business and the general premise of what they proposed is what we're going to incentivize and they're gonna bring to the market. I, I wanna be careful that we're not inserting our preference or our judgment to the point that we're building a product that the developer no longer want, wants to invest in. Uh, that wasn't what they, you know, had in mind when they, they responded to our RFP. I mean.
I was very excited by all four RFPs. I think all four of the offerings could get us there, but the housing study is telling us time is of the importance. Our, our in-house consult, or, or hired consultants saying the same thing. So I'm really looking to Salina Development and that they, and their timelines are six months ahead of everybody else. And I think message I'm getting from the community and the employers in the community say that timeline should be our focus. So, and.
Well, and I think for that very reason, though I really, and I'm, I'm an amenity person, uh, 'cause I think if you're gonna put five hundred people close together, particularly if they're on the other side of I- one thirty-five, you gotta have amenities. Uh, or you start, people start getting on top of each other. And, uh, you know, I'm worried about anytime we have small units close together with no amenities, eventually that leads to Salina PD getting called, you know. So it's gotta be something for folks to do. Um, and that's where negotiation on amenities would have to come later. I think Flatter, Flaherty and Collins timeline is gonna be too late for us. Um, there are those of us in the room who could easily pay those rents. I imagine there are many more in town who would find those rents a little higher than what they thought we were gonna come up with. Uh, but I don't think we could wait two years to get the first unit on, online. Uh, my, you know, I, I like the, the, uh, I love the idea of having housing in three different areas in town. So we don't have it all clustered because each one of these housing, any housing developments is, I hope is gonna be a, a local economic boon for that immediate neighborhood. You know, and if we spread housing out, you know, some folks may wanna live in different areas of, of, of town. Uh, the, uh, in, in that regard, just from the, the options, I like six thirty-five holdings. Uh, I'm glad Mr. Webster gave the economic breakdown because I realize I'm gonna have to look at, okay, what's, who's delivering the product that we need. And then probably secondarily look at, see if we can stomach the risk to get it. Uh, my major, uh, hesitancy with Salina Destination is the smaller size of the units. I'm, I just personally think we're getting more than just single people coming in. Yeah, we do have some folks who have houses elsewhere who may come into one vision. They just need a place to change their clothes, pick up the mail and may not even need to pick up the mail. But, uh, we're getting folks, you know, recently married, one kid, two kids. And while this may not be a place they lived for several years, well, some of those square footages just look a little small. But, you know, I'm just gonna go there and stop. I need to hear other people's comments to finish turning this stuff over in my head here.
Okay. I did, uh, my own SWOT analysis this morning. And I'll just, for the record, I, I had thrown Flaherty and Collins off, out. You know, the timeline, the, the connection to Salina and Kansas doesn't fit. So I think as a commission, we need to start narrowing it down. So Flaherty and Collins is out for me. Uh, I will go back to your comments, Commissioner Davis, about having the people on top of each other. I just think five hundred units congested in that Menards property is, is too much. And the obstruction of amenities, the highway, uh, poses an issue. You know, you just got one way into town. And so where I am, if we're gonna build five hundred units on that one side, I think it's contingent, contingent on extending, connecting to Schilling Road. A lot of the workforce is to the south. And I, I just, I just see congestion, that many people in the one spot. In that respect, I like the six thirty-five holding proposal in the different locations. I really like the downtown, uh, Mulberry location, even though it's not that many units at this time. Uh, I think that'd be a real asset to the downtown, uh, everything that's going on downtown. Uh, plus the possibility of expanding over to the school property. Uh, and they are diversifying the market and the type. Uh, you know, the duplex town home aspect was not part of the initial scope of the project, but, uh, I kinda now understand the marketing avenue of that, that, you know, some people would never imagine living in an apartment building, but they'll do a duplex. Uh, six thirty-five has, uh, I think really connected with Salina and her employers. And I, I just came away with the feeling that they wanna continue to invest in Salina and other areas. And a lot of enthusiasm and, you know, might, might be a lot of fluff, but, uh, sounded good. Their contractor, I looked them up, Luke Draley, seemed like a top-notch developer, uh, contractor. And plus six thirty-five could utilize the county funds. Back to Perry Reed, uh, you know, their pluses are they already have the Salina presence, has a design ready to go, uh, with the timeline and nice layout. But then, uh, the second phase, not starting for a year and a half kinda bothers me running into that time problem again. And then we come back to the five hundred units concentrated in the one area. Salina Destination checked all the, all marks, well-financed Kansas to presence. And, uh, their plans are ready to go. And I, I, I did like their, their design. I wasn't real sold on the duplex part of it. And, you know, I kinda wonder if that duplex phase could, could be in another location. As they said, they had other locations in mind. Uh, that's about all I had. I, I, I guess one question that I did have, the JCO construction portfolio. Didn't see a lot in their portfolio of apartment construction, a lot of commercial construction, but, uh, they did present well the other day, so.
So Commissioner, am I hearing Salina Development is kind of your top?
You mean Salina Destination?
Destination, sorry. Destination Development.
I'm kind of between six thirty-five and Salina Destination, yes.
I'll preface what I'm gonna say with, I thought there was a nice diversity of product and really appreciate the time and effort that all four, um, presenters took. Obviously there was a lot of time and money invested, but, I mean, at the risk of making it sound too simple, I think a big factor is timing. And based on, uh, the matrix we've been provided, we have one development that hasn't accept, like, doesn't have a timing risk. And then we have to, I think, at that point, figure out what timing risk is acceptable to us if we're looking at the other contractors. And it sounds to me like we've already had multiple statements about Flaherty and Collins and maybe the timing just not being a good match for us and, and the project. Um, but maybe as a group, we need to figure out what, what timing risk is acceptable, if we're okay with any.
Could I ask you a question? If timing risk was not an issue, did you?
Um.
Have feelings one way or the other?
Like, I keep coming back to Salina Destination because of the diversity in product. And even their, uh, you know, aesthetically and, and I'll get their little packet out. The duplexes, I mean, you could have done one, one type of duplex, but instead they, they've done two. And one of them is a two-story. Um, I mean, I like architectural diversity. And I, I think that the buying or the renting public does as well. And if memory serves correctly, there was also a mention of, check my notes, a lease-to-own option was on the table there.
That was a good one.
And I was intrigued by that, to, to be honest. I'm gonna make sure I have the right.
That was correct.
Okay.
You do, yeah. Had that on my little sheet here.
Okay, any other comments? I'll make a few comments and then we'll see if we can, where we go. Uh, the Flaherty and Collins bothered me a little bit in the fact that it's, uh, five hundred units packed into us, to a small, uh, piece of ground. Um, no, as far as I can remember, no garages or carports. They mentioned they could add it, but again, that would probably increase our rents, which we're already on the high side. Um, you're concerned about Virginia Drive and Virginia Drive hat, or Magnolia, has the availability to expand, put around about in some different things. Coming off of Ohio Street with five hundred properties, I see being a real concern. I'm not sure how we'd get a left turn lane into, and you're just a few feet down. I, I didn't go measure it from, from the new Cedarhurst. So I saw, you talk about traffic, I saw a traffic issue there. Um, plus they were on the, on the top side of the rents. Um, I do like the Ohio Quarter better, I'll be honest with you. Um, when I look at rental properties, that was, that would've been my first choice if I was developing instead of the Menards, um, area where everybody seemed to, to gravitate to. So, um, I, I'm hearing that maybe the Flaherty and Collins is one that we can maybe put aside?
Be my suggestion.
I think that's fair.
Okay.
Just based on time constraints alone.
Okay. And their timeline was, yeah. The, no contractor, they still had to, to engine, you know, architect what they were gonna do in there. So again, I think that timeline got us way out. So, um, if everyone's okay with that, I think we'll, we'll.
I was concerned about the access there.
On the Ohio Street, yeah. And I didn't see anywhere else that you'd come in with a second exit offer that.
And my concern was the, the, that many people, once that Cedarhurst gets filled up, plus staff, you got, uh, what'd they say, seventy-two units there?
Yeah.
I don't know how many staff they'll have. That's just a lot of traffic in one area.
Yeah, I think Flaherty and Collins obviously has a lot of, um, they have a lot of experience, but the fact that they, uh, really didn't come with a contractor in mind and were gonna have to do their own.
I think that site would be better suited for single family.
So, okay, with that, I think we're down to three.
Could I?
Yes.
Put you on the, I liked your comments. Did, did you have one that you were leaning towards? I'm trying to keep score here.
As I said, they, they all have their pluses, their minuses. Um, the six thirty-five holdings, I wish they had better control of the sites, 'cause I do like the three sites. I mean, that was, and I've said this all along, I don't, I'm not a big, um, unit, five hundred-unit, uh, complex type of person. I really like the, the multiple sites. They really only have control over one. They really only have control over one. The other two, they're, they've talked to them. Then Commissioner Longbine mentioned the school district property. You know, I mean, again, in, in a perfect world, I would vacate that street, buy the, the school and put something there. I don't believe that we have that much time for what would need to be done to, to make the, the, that property usable. Again, I think they might be able to get it put together, but I don't know the timeline to do that. So that concerned me a little bit. Their rents were a little bit higher than some of the others. I look at the Salina Destination, I think they maybe listened to staff and saying, we need to bring rents down. And so I think their rents fall within the, the range that we were hoping to maybe hit, the eight hundred and the nine fifty. Again, I don't really wanna live in a 528-square-foot apartment. I mean, there are some people that do. I have a little bit of concern about the duplexes and not from what they look like and what they would do for the community, but we have already entered into two agreements. One with Southview Estates and one with Aeroplane, and they're gonna build a lot of duplexes. Now, I know they're not, they're, they're to be purchased at this point. We've heard rumors that they may be coming back to us to make some of those, you know, available as investment properties. I think the rent-to-own goes directly against what they're trying to do, allowing them to rent and then to, to purchase. I think that goes a little bit against what we're, you know, we're doing to try to help those two local developers out. So that was my concern there. Perry Reed, I like the fact that we had two different style of, of apartments. I thought that was kinda unique 'cause they don't look alike. The, and I, I'm gonna look at staff. I believe the Perry Reed properties and also the Salina Destination, wasn't there a second road going out to Schilling?
There's certainly the possibility for that.
Thought there showed on the site plan.
I, I know it did on Salina Destination and I, somehow I left last week's document in my office.
I've got it all here somewhere if I can find it.
You want?
Yeah.
You need the site plan for Perry Reed?
I got it right here.
I got it. Well, I drove there last week and found out I know the property owner out there that lives, has a house out there.
So I'm, I'm on the Royal site plan.
Connecting that.
Which is on the west side of Virginia and south side of Magnolia. And it kinda parallels Dry Creek, but, and stops short of connecting to Magnolia. It gets pretty close, but stops short.
I said Schilling, I meant Magnolia.
Yeah.
And in Salina Destination, they did have a secondary road on the backside there also.
Yeah, they, they, they were showing, I think they called the Dry Creek Road.
Road, right.
But, yeah. Now, it was, my recollection is it was shaded differently, so, on their site plan, but it.
Yeah.
Yeah, there, so, one on the, if you can zoom in on the one on the left. That's Salina Destination. So both of them get to that northwest corner. The Salina Destination master site plan shows connectivity to Magnolia.
Right. So we, we'd have two exits out of that area onto Magnolia?
Correct. Now, you know, you'd have to factor in cost, but that could be a development agreement negotiating, negotiation item.
I mean, I guess if they show it on their site plan, I'm taking it.
No, I'm speaking more on the Perry Reed side. That, that connection could be a negotiating point.
Okay. Again, Salina Destination's very aggressive on their timeline. I did have one question. They did show if they did all apartments, that they had a phase one and phase two. Do we know what that consisted of?
Yeah, I think the conversation that we had with them in, in the evaluation committee interview, they indicated that, you know, they're, they got comfortable with absorption by having that duplex product. They, you know, they shared the concern of 500 apartment units and needing to phase that. So their suggested approach was bring a different product onto the market. So if it were all, if it were 500, then I think the conversation would gravitate back to phasing of some sort.
Yeah.
500 apartments.
And, and again, a lot of what we maybe like or don't like, and again, I've not done this before, but was, we're doing a development agreement. I don't know if there's a chance for a different product in there. I mean, I think, is that all open when we do a development agreement to a certain extent?
We certainly can have that conversation, but it's gonna impact numbers.
I, I understand.
And the more we move off of square footages, the more it impacts rent, absorption. So I think we, I think, I would strongly encourage you to assume that the baseline is what's been presented to you the rest of that discussion, but we just have to see how receptive any developer was to those kinda changes.
And Matt and I have had this discussion more than once that I have a little bit of a disagreement about the phasing. I think the phasing, it, yeah, it's not a, you know, if we build 500 out, granted, it's not a risk to the city. But I'm also looking at the other landlords we have in town. And if we build 500 and that absorption rate doesn't fill those and we have 200 vacant apartments for a period of time, that's not good for anybody. I mean, that, that phasing protects, protects the developer, but I also think it protects my other landlords in the community that we don't have a glutton of, of properties that are not being rented. And so I, I, I don't mind the phasing as long as it's worded such a way that it protects both parties. If I have to, I, if I have to err on building too many apartments or building too few, I'll build too few. That's just my personal, that's my personal side and you don't have to agree with it. But I'm, I think it's better for everybody. If, I'd rather send money back to the state than to mess up our market completely.
And Matt and I've had a similar conversation and I think he and I disagree as well, or at least what I'm, was suggesting gets pretty complicated. But my, we've seen it with aeroplanes, I think. We, there were some, there was some acknowledgement in there that if interest rates got too high, if costs accelerated too much, then there was an opportunity for a re-opener. So my suggested approach is the agreement starts with the presumption that the developer has an obligation to fully build out and then has a relief valve if the market's not responding. And I'll give Matt the opportunity to speak on both of them. But Matt's point is, that's all great in theory, Mike, but there's a lot of devil, you know, a lot of mechanics in the details.
Yeah, I understand that. And, and we, and I know that time is of the essence. And I think if I look at Salina Destination, I gotta pull my timeline out here somewhere, I got it buried. But I mean, they're done way before the end of 2026. So we actually have some time to extend that out. I mean, and again, that may not be their wishes, those would be discussions we need to have. But by all accounts, from what I know, construction costs have come down a little bit. I do believe that there's a chance they, you know, we had a supply chain issue and that obviously raised costs. It depends on which economist you wanna listen to. As I've always said, if there was one economist knew what was going on, we'd have one economist. But, but basically, you know, I'm hearing that, you know, in the next, you know, 12 to 18 months, we're gonna see interest rates perhaps come down even, so.
One other point.
I like that economist better than the other ones I've been listening to, that's why I quoted him, so.
Something I'd like to keep in mind, though, is by 2030, we need a thousand of these units. So it's this 2023 and this 500's gonna come online in the next two, three years, but there's still additional demand predicted and, and we've got the workforce coming in now.
Well, and another point that I feel obligated to make is the developer's going to make investments based on, you know, the, the intended plan. So they're gonna acquire property and it may be in their business model to keep moving, not take a pause and incur additional costs. But I know from conversations over the weekend and beyond that Matt certainly has some insight that I wanna give him an opportunity to share.
So, so thank you. Yeah, I, I would just say that, you know, as the, as the city's representative, as somebody working on your behalf, I always want the leverage to lie, you know, with, with my client. And, and so, you know, if you're willing to give up some of that leverage to, to the developer, I would just say you could expect it to be used against you or you could, or you could expect that, that you would lose control of things. And if you're, if you're willing, if you're willing to do that, then we can go down that road. Mike and I've had the discussion about crafting the development agreement. What, what I would say is if we can build into the development agreement empirical triggers. So in other words, i- if, if it could be demonstrated that the market is, is under pressure because of the delivery of too, too many units, then, then that, that could be some, that could be a measure that everybody agrees on and then you slow things down. But my fear is that'll be difficult, but, but I don't, you know, I don't, I don't think it possible. And then the lag between when the market shows stress and then when you can get a developer who's building a big project to slow down is, is yet another challenge. But I'm, I'm prepared to help the city with whatever approach you wanna take. And it's not impossible, you know, any, anything, if, if I thought this was unworkable, I'd just tell you, hey, you know, this is, don't, don't do it. But I do think it's workable, I just think it's difficult. And if I understood more about, about how we might demonstrate whether, whether there was too much pressure on the market or not, then I think we could get to, to, to some consensus on this. And I, I think if we go to a developer, so any of the developers, I won't, I won't single anybody out. If you told a developer, hey, we wanna slow things down some, I don't think that would be a, a real challenge. Now, if you, if you said, I wanna add a year to your, to your schedule, maybe mobilizing the, their workforce and trying to keep them around for additional year could be, you know, could be problematic or, or a long period of time. But I think, you know, all things equal, most developers would like to sort of slow things down because that way you don't need as big a workforce and you have a better chance of absorption. So, so those are just my initial thoughts. And as we move through the term sheet and the development agreement negotiation, I think we can incorporate those sort of breaks in the system if, if that's the, the judgment.
Yeah, 'cause I think as we go through this, what's good for the city should also be good for the developer to a cer, a certain extent.
Yeah, no, I agree.
I don't think we're competing here. I think we're trying to work together.
Symmetrical, yeah, symmetrical risk is, is always better. Or, or in this case, asymmetrical risk as long as you're on the good side of it.
One, one other thing to, that I, that I had written down here is that Perry Reed and Salina Destination Development both hold, I shouldn't say forever, but they hold, build and hold. I believe six thirty-five holdings stated they would, and correct me if I'm wrong, I had a note that they'd hold for maybe 10 years or it could be longer, but they had at least, they said they'd hold for at least 10 years.
My understanding of their statement was that. They, sorry, my microphone is off. My, my understanding of their statement was that they are aware of and will utilize the Opportunity Zone tax credits. And because of that, they'd at least have to hold it for 10 years. So it was kind of a demonstration that they'd be in at least that long.
The other thing, and, and I guess I'll look to my far right, is I know Perry Reed already manages chap, well, it used to be Chapel Ridge and then.
What used to be Reserves of Prairie Glen.
Reserves of Prairie Glen. I don't know if that's a good or a bad thing, that they'd have that much control over that many units in one community. And that would be a big chunk of our apartment-like facilities.
And I had that concern as well, of there would be no competition.
Look, somebody else is maybe a little more versed in this. You're looking at me on some stuff.
No, you're fine. I just, I've, I actually might go a different direction with this than you think. One, they've invested in our community already and they've gotten to know our community and apparently they deem it worthy of, of a project of this magnitude. So I'm not really concerned of there being like a, it wouldn't be technically a monopoly, but it just, to me, it's, it's a sign that they believe in our community and have put money in it. And the market's gonna do what the market's gonna do in terms of the products that they have are, I guess you could argue they have a lot of holdings in the same type of product, not a lot of diversity, but that's their risk, not, not our problem. So as far as other property owners in the area, not a lot of them really have similar properties. It's gonna be more your standard, single-family residential, your duplexes, you know, maybe smaller complex. I can think of a couple owners that have, you know, 30, 50-unit complexes, but it's, it's definitely a different product. And it's from a different era of architectural, it's from the eighties and seventies. So again, I think it bodes well that they wanna put more money into our community and believe in the, in the market.
The other thing about Perry Reed is, you know, you have the Royal Magnolia Commons, so we do have two different development agreements that we'll be negotiating, for better, for worse, I'm not sure. Do we?
Can I ask a question? There was a sheet that overlapped the, the delivery of units. It had lots of pretty little color on it. That timeline, yeah. I was trying to find it, I just can't find my. But when, when would Perry Reed start to deliver?
Oh, I had that, I'm sorry. Oh, I have it here somewhere. Right here, there you go. Thank you.
Like they, they have building, the Royal has site work starting sooner and building one in June of 2025?
Twenty-five.
Um, and actually, an easier way to look at that may be in the, the matrix that has the timeline, the project schedule.
Were you looking for this one?
First units available in October of 24 for Magnolia Commons and August of 25 for the Royal.
Okay, guys, how do we wanna move forward?
Well, I'd like to propose a question. Is there more positive vibe or negative vibe concerning Perry Reed? I'm just listening to the comments we've made and most of them have centered around the other two. And I'm just wondering, is.
Would you like to take a straw poll and narrow it to two?
Is that legal?
As long as you do it so that all the rest of us can see it.
Yeah. Or before, was there a particular, what was our major hesitancy about Perry Reed? Or is there any?
My, my hesitancy is the congestion of 500 units on top of each other in one place. And as we just discussed, the, they're already controlling several properties. That would, I would rather see competition.
Mayor Commissioners, this is Jacob Wood, Deputy City Manager.
Where that voice came from?
Yeah, sorry. I just, I know we've had a lot of conversation about having all the units on top of each other. So I, I, I'm a PowerPoint guru. So I just wanted to show you kinda what this, this looks like. If you look over here by the mall, this is Chapel Ridge, which is 296 units right now. And I just took that area and kinda laid it out over the top of the area that we're looking at just so you can kinda, you can get, kinda get an idea of how many units are coming off. And I mean, this is a, a one entry coming on to, to Magnolia with lots and lots of traffic. And so I don't know if that helps in, in the decision or not. I just wanted you to kinda, it's hard to, to picture all of those units in one place, but well, this is something that we currently have in the community and kinda how it would outlay or, or lay over that, that area. So I don't know if that's help, helpful at all, but it's, I've been playing over here on the computer, so I thought I'd share it.
Where the blue is up on the, the top left over here in the, that, how does that look with 500 on it?
So there is an, an overlay that Salina Destination did, but I gotta find it.
Chapel Ridge was two, how many?
Two ninety-six.
At two ninety-six. So this is just, this is an overview that, that Salina Destination submitted with 500 units at that one site.
And then you have Perry Reed's as well.
I can. So they don't.
I think it's worth mentioning that Magnolia is one of those roads that we have already slotted for improvements. And I think will be adaptable to increased traffic flow and honestly, sounds like a good, good spot for our first roundabout.
You're gonna get emails on that?
Well, they take a while to get used to, but.
The, that's one of, that's one of two Perry Reed sites.
Yeah.
Two 52, I believe.
Two 52.
That's the Royal, yeah.
And then the other one is two 52 as well, but below, uh, south of Menards. So it's quite a bit more spread out than, than anything we currently have, is, is what, is kind of the point I'm trying to make.
Is there possibility of access road on the east side of Menards? Trying to picture how much space.
There's a commercial lot in front of Menards that's platted and then the circulation's through their parking lot.
Well, we're gonna run out of time.
Yeah, we're not doing, getting this finished before four.
Throw it out there and see what happens.
I will say, uh, one of the pluses with 635, I felt. It's been my concern for a long time of convincing people to relocate, move to Slaena. And I just keep thinking that eventually it's gonna happen. And I think they had a vision for helping with that.
Well, I guess I can tell you where I am now.
Okay, let's get one out.
I really liked the three locations of 635 Holdings. I mean, you know, looking at the, the visual of, of Perry Reed just now, you know, that is spread out, it's green space, it's amenities. And I, and I could probably use those to, in exchange for that all being in one location. The amenities make up for the location. But I just think what you can do for the rest of the city, 'cause you know, we're not doing anything on West Crawford. You know, one of our goals was to build something in, in town, so to speak, infill development and, and we're not using the ambassador for good reason. But right now, if I just had to go one way or the other, unless Mr. Webster was to tell me financially it just won't work, I'd, I'd probably lean towards 635.
And I don't think it's the finances is the varying, the, the variables and the risk that those variables impart.
Right, probably should refer to it as the risk identified, yeah.
Yeah. And I, I, I was impressed with the, the vision and kind of the approach. The big concern that we're kind of zeroing in on is site control, debt, the ability to acquire debt, the, the need to continue to dialogue about their vision to finalize their plan.
And, and I, and I may change my mind two more times at 4:04, but.
I'll just point out again that on the SWOT matrix, they had the most negatives of the three and the, and the very middle score of five. And quite frankly, I think two of those sites could be developed separately. They don't need our incentivize.
And the other thing, the Starbahn, while it's separate from the housing, I, I saw more excitement about that, I think, than I did the housing. And I wrote a little note to myself, I, I hope the housing is not a lost leader for the Starbahn project, which, you know, is, and the truth is, I asked the question about baseball because we were already spending several million dollars in baseball area. So you see how I don't make a decision, that's because I need to hear other people's decisions. So that's a real soft vote. But I, if they're all gonna be in the same place, then I'd go with Perry Reed. I'll hold there until four, until 3:55.
Well, we're not gonna have, I, I think we're gonna have to take a break here and come back afterwards. I think our city commission meeting is gonna be fairly short. I really think we need to not rush the final decision. Let's go ahead and hear from.
I was just gonna comment regarding the, the 635 Holdings. I love the idea of the downtown infill. It's tremendous, but I think the, basically property control or site control, or however you want to reference to it, I mean, that's, that's gonna be imperative. And if, if that's not locked down, we're back to our time issue, which again is another minus. And, you know, I just keep coming back to, if, if, I mean, and I don't know how open the state would be to extending deadlines once shovel breaks ground, but I, I think to assume that would be, we'd be remiss to think, hey, they're, they're not gonna pull that money away if we don't meet the timeline.
And the state is subject to some ARPA deadlines. I think, you know, they're, if you can incur eligible expenses, you can probably get positioned to have the, the money out the door. But then you have the time element of employers needing the, the accommodations for employees as well.
Makes sense. And I'm also gonna comment on the Perry Reed project. I mean, I think it's worth noting, one, I'm not as concerned about the access from Magnolia. I, I think we will adapt and expand accordingly. It's, it's already kind of been slotted. Two, it's, yeah, it's 500 units in one general location, but technically it's two smaller complexes and they're architecturally very different. And to me, that's, that's worth something. And I don't think it's gonna feel shoehorned. And I don't think it's gonna feel like you're, you're stacked on each other like, you know, shoeboxes in a shoe store kind of thing. I think it's well thought out and the, the end product would probably be something we'd be happy to have. That probably didn't help because it didn't.
Well, it gives us a place to start with when we resume.
I keep coming back to all the positives on Slaena Destination in terms of it just being, it seems like a lock in terms of all the positive attributes based on, and, and I understand that these are quantifiables that are very, I'll use the term antiseptic in, in the sense of it's based on, you know, do we have a hold of the property? Is it the contractor locked down, et cetera, et cetera? Where we're not talking about amenities, we're not talking about layouts. It's just these ducks are in a row. If you'll pardon the antiquated idiom, if you will. But, um, yeah, I mean, it's, it's a lot of positives and less risk is what I keep coming back to.
Yeah, I, the thing I like about Slaena Destination, they're, they're ready to go, they have financing. The drawback is the fact that it's gonna be fairly tight in there with everything they're putting in there. And I do have still some concerns about that many duplexes based on what we're doing. I think that's something that I would, that in the development agreement I would want to address somehow, you know? And not sure until you get their, their thoughts. But as far as somebody that's ready to go and, and can get us some, some, some properties out. And again, we've asked for, for properties that would have lower rents and they've, they've reached out and done that. And some of that's been, you know, it's been due to size of, of the apartments. But again, that's.
Would we be putting the units that we need a couple of years from now on the market? I mean, if, you know, if you get a family of three, they're not gonna want a one-bedroom.
We have 10 minutes to our commission meeting. I think I'd like to, do we recess? How do we do that until after how?
Uh, yes, in this case, a recess would be in order. Under the circumstances, it would probably be best to do that based on a motion to do so.
And how do you suggest that be ordered to reconvene?
I think that's a function of, are you anticipating a time interval after the close of the regular meeting?
I think I would recess and reconvene 10 minutes after the, the, the regular board me, uh, commission meeting.
The, the one thing that I was gonna offer after this meeting and then as it relates to that recess is we need to be sure to keep all of our deliberations happening at the dais and, and on the record. So as we're recessed, avoid communications amongst yourselves with others. We need to pick up where we're leaving off at the dais.
Yep.
And I think a motion to the effect of what you articulated, Mayor, would be in order, be the best way to approach that.
Move, we recess this meeting to, uh, five minutes after the closure of our 4:00 PM meeting this afternoon.
Can you give us 10 minutes?
10 minutes after the closure of our 4:00 PM.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion to recess the special meeting, commission meeting until, we'll reconvene 10 minutes after the end of our regularly scheduled city commission meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, holding back.